Yeah.
We are, okay.
But she's been taking really-
I've taken pretty good minutes.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Uh, okay. Um, sure. Yeah, okay. Um, so yeah, starting with the housing. What I have highlighted in yellow are the changes that I made since the last one. Since the last meeting. The first being developments that will not provide a sufficient amount of affordable homes. Then, uh, what I did here is, we had this language 11224 addition of dwellings to residential part property. Basically allowing up to four dwellings on subject property except for, growth management and inclusionary zoning, but I just, there was a provision in our existing bylaw that said existing lots are by right allowed to build a dwelling. And I just, up to four dwellings may be constructed on an existing lot. Just to make that clear. And then, let me see. Uh, and then the perpetual affordability, the resale restriction. So I think last time we had, you know, mentioned the equity and that that was, some thought that that was not the way to do it, that it should be really based on the index of being at eighty, hundred or twenty percent, hundred and twenty percent of area median income. So, basically the provisions to ensure continued affordability of affordable units offered for sale shall include a formula for calculating the maximum sale price, based on the applicable affordability level. The developer of the dwelling unit shall be considered the first seller and must sell the unit at a price no greater than the maximum sales price. Uh, meaning definition of affordability for subsequent sales of the dwelling, the maximum sale price shall be the greater of, A, the maximum sale price as described above, or B, the unit owner's original purchase price adjusted for the actual documented costs of any capital improvements to the affordable unit during year, owner's period of ownership. And then affordable dwellings shall be marketed for rent lease to households within the same income bracket, as the dwelling was intended for. For example, if the development includes dwellings affordable to those earning less than eighty percent of Burlington, South Burlington median income, those dwellings must be sold to households meeting respective income qualifications, earning less than eighty percent of Burlington, South Burlington median income. Um, and then I just made a small change, turning this into a, question, yes? I don't know, or maybe I didn't, maybe I didn't mean to highlight that, I don't know. I think that's a change, sorry. And then here I included like a little example in a, in a call out box. Example, fee and move calculate for, to explain the fee and low. Fee and move calculated for a 25 unit project as follows. And then there's just the explanation of how it works.
But that's not setting the, that's just an example, right?
Yeah, so, so this,
Oh, I see that.
Yeah, it says, the table sets it, so it's, um, the project size between 10 and 20 dwelling units, required payment and lose thirty five thousand dollars per unit, per, per required affordable unit. Um, 21 to 50 dwelling units, seventy thousand required payment.
So we have to amend the bylaw and be kind of like, that's for inflation?
Yeah. Bye! Well, I mean, I guess like, considering that, we generally make amendments regardless about once a year.
Is it possible to make it like an administrative thing?
I think, I think only if you specify a calculation method, you know, like the administrator shall use.
Yeah, I mean, we could do that.
We, we could. It might be.
Or like, is it something that goes on the fee schedule that, that's then annual with the select board?
Well, that would be the other thing is we, we could reflect, we could, we could simply state, that recommended table could be put into the select board fee sheet, which they would probably adjust at least every other year.
Yeah.
So we can, we can keep those numbers as the recommended numbers here in the bylaw text. But you might, we might add some, you know, th- these fees as of date of adoption, to view current fees, you know, these fees will be adopted for, as policy for the select board or something.
That sounds good. It's a great point about inflation.
Yeah. As someone has to go to the body to get angry.
And then, uh, the only other change I made was to back, add back into the, this is, and this is not housing anymore. Uh, well, it is, but it's not. Four, one, whatever. Conserve energy added, I added back in the, the, uh, storage criteria, per Chapin's request, and Chapin, you have your hand up.
Go ahead, Chapin.
I had noticed that, and I wanted to thank you for that, and I would be okay if it were two days, I don't know what.
Do I hear three?
Well, the, the, um, the benefit, you know, anyway, I, but I was confused by this table, because the third, um, entry that we can't quite see, or maybe I can if I get rid of-
Generate at least fifty percent of estimated energy demand through onsite removals.
Or maybe it's the fourth one, two of them, the last two looked the same to me, and I, can we scroll up a little bit there?
Oh.
Or maybe it's the first two in this, in this chart. What's the difference between the first two?
Two of the following elements.
Oh, two and then one, two and then one, and then the, the last one, fifteen, at least one. I get it, okay, it's fifty percent of at least one, and because this winds up repeating many times, and I didn't quite understand. I do now, but thank you. Thank you. Thank you, I'm, I'm good, and I'm glad that energy storage is there, and I don't know that it has to be four.
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
Um, and then, let's see, so that's, um, that's housing. Were there any other, I don't, I don't believe there were any comments on the other amendments, but.
So I was unable to make that link work? Yeah, sorry. So I couldn't actually see them when I was looking yesterday.
Oh, okay.
So that may be why there weren't comments. Okay, I don't know if other people have, were able to get into this.
Um, the main thing is that memo, staff memo changes since May sixteenth, that's the one that.
I could bring that up if that's easier.
Right, summarizes all of science changes. Yeah, let's just go through, because it hasn't changed.
Right, this, this is, this was part of, this was going to be reviewed in our last meeting, correct? Cause I see the six, six, twenty-three.
Yes.
Bottom, okay. So I looked at it for last meeting, I haven't looked at it since then, so.
Yeah, I don't think I had any questions for you.
We've gone through the growth management stuff. Off-street parking, dwelling, solar canopies over parking are allowed without apartment can be located and setbacks. And then some.
Chicken.
Yeah, chicken.
Oh, chickens, right.
Yeah. Okay, that was, oh, and then in chapter nineteen, there is an exemption from residential density requirements for adaptive reuse projects. They're added a density bonus for mixed-use residential projects that include more than thirty percent of affordable dwellings. And then clarifying the transfer of development rights applies only transfers of development rights from ARZV to the growth center outside of the one base code district. And then, yeah, need charging, keeping chickens. That was, I think that was it.
Pretty minor stuff.
Yeah.
Could you explain why there's that need for clarifying about the transfer of development rights?
Because now it says, um, transfer development rights, applies to all of the growth center, and right now, um, there are no.
Got it.
It doesn't really apply in the form-based code district.
Yes.
Yeah.
Got it, thank you.
But, but transfer of development rights cannot be used for development in the residential zoning district. And currently, um, no. I mean, fine with me, I just, I, you know, I trust your judgment on, like, is this something that people are requesting all the time, or is it?
No.
Never, it's hardly ever been used. Yeah, I, that's what my reflection was.
Yeah, okay.
And, and in form-based code, we don't restrict density, so it's, yeah.
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
Um. It becomes irrelevant basically.
Right, right. Um, okay.
That looks good to me.
So I guess at this point, um, I guess, think about how you feel about the, you know, the housing amendments and in, and. He's gotta go back?
Yeah.
Okay, someone doing things there. And, and whether, you know, how comfortable you feel about it, and whether, um, you would, um, like to warn, uh, ask staff to warn a hearing.
Can we, uh, can we, I know we've asked this before. Can we warn a hearing, uh, saying that we are assuming you'll make the changes that we said we would make?
Correct, yes.
Yeah.
Um, and, and just to be, I guess, yeah, we should be very clear about what those changes are, and, you know, whether you want to drop the, the one-twenty AMI altogether.
Can we shift it to sixty, eighty, a hundred? And still keep the three levels?
What would that be? Sixty, a hundred and, and sixty?
No, sixty, eighty, a hundred.
Oh, sixty, eighty, a hundred. I guess I wouldn't recommend sixty-two down to sixty.
Really hard, that would be lower. Burlington, they have, have a huge struggle.
Yeah, and, and it's not that we wouldn't ever get a project that was at sixty, but it would have to be outside of the regulatory, um, like, like it would have to be something outside regulations, like it would have to be a programmatic, you know, a, a collaboration with, uh, how, affordable housing developer like CHT where, you know, somebody donates a parcel and, um, you know, we get a lot of money and, you know. Yeah.
Well, maybe just. Sorry, go ahead, Chapin.
I just wanna say, I'd be okay with just two levels.
Yep. Um, and, or, or like packing those three levels into the, into eighty and a hundred. You know what I'm saying, like ten percent at, I don't, or maybe work out this little matrix thing of weighting the different points first. Or maybe you can only do one-twenty if it's combined with like a hundred. So you could do an all, all eighty unit, all eighty percent AMI project, and all a hundred percent AMI project. But if you want to do one-twenty, it has to be in combination with, with others.
With the other lower, we can, we can talk to Matt.
Yeah.
And I think we need to have a staff brainstorming about the best way to go around this math, but I definitely think it's, it's possible, and if we end up with like a quantitative calculation that no one can argue, that would be, it's out there.
Yeah, I mean, maybe what we can do is come up with like a couple or, a couple of examples to like, propose as a, as a way of like, sort of.
Yeah, I think that would be great, I think envisioning a couple of different scenarios of how we could move forward with that change with the, the sort of demoting the hundred and twenty AMI.
Yeah.
I, I would love to see what you creative people come up with. Um, I, I don't know how people feel about wanting to see what that looks like before we, ask you to warn a hearing. Or do we want to, I mean, we can still make changes, even though we've warned a hearing.
You can make changes during the hearing, during the hearing as well.
Um, I would kind of like to get this out into the world. And, and get feedback from people too, and, and hear, hear what the community says, and, so I'm, I'm happy to have you, to ask you to warn a hearing, um, and then, you know, maybe this one, this one question can, we can still look at some different scenarios that come on. Okay. I think I'm okay with the one-twenty being part of it if there are other.
Right.
Only if there are.
The other stuff cannot be asked to combine with something with a lower affordability.
Do I hit the light switches?
Yeah, yes, can roll again.
Under the sun set, we're not blinded by that natural light.
Can I say something?
Yes, oh, sorry, Chapin, your, your hand was hard to see with the background.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Um, so I have, you know, I've had a little bit of trepidation about having ways to bypass growth management, given the town's desire to limit development. And I think with dropping the one-twenty completely, I'm comfortable with this because, not so much because of the number of parcels that are developable, but more because I feel like that's, that, that's a steeper bar to avoid growth management. So I, you know, I'm, I'm weighing these, and I feel like with, I still have some trepidation. But I think I'm okay with it, if, if we don't have a hundred and twenty.
Okay. Jill and Kate, do you have any thoughts about moving this? Excuse me, forward to a public hearing, recognizing that we still can tweak these pieces.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm in with you, Megan, I think it's good to get it out there.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I think we should start hearing for more votes.
Yeah, okay. Great. Um, we don't need to vote on that, right? I can just ask you to move.
Do you wanna make a motion?
Okay, all right. So we need a motion. I, I would be, I would entertain a motion. Do we have a?
Yeah.
Do we have language for one?
Um, oh, well, that motion looks like it's a copy paste of the Glazer Bummer, you can just say, um, make a motion to direct staff to warn a hearing.
Okay, for the collective bylaw amendments.
Somebody wanna take that on?
I can make the motion.
Okay.
I, I move that we ask staff to warn a hearing for the bylaw amendments that have been proposed with the alterations that have been requested this evening.
I'll second that, great. Check it out, Shayla, all in favor? Raise your hand or say aye.
Aye.
All right, looks unanimous, thank you all. Um, right, that's great, that would be interesting to move forward with some of these things. Awesome, and hear what the community says. All right, uh, see, so is our next item, the eight-twenty?
Yeah, it's, yes, so we're ahead of schedule.
Um, great.
I actually, I do wanna flip it, um, and first talk about, um, date and location options for larger meetings.
Yep.
And hearings.
Fine. And actually, I'm gonna stop because I'm gonna have to go over the select boards soon.
Yes.
Okay.
So, uh, for the past several years, when we've had larger meetings or bylaw hearings, we've gone over to the police station and used their meeting room space. We no longer have access to that room because the Community Justice Center moved from secure to access upstairs to that space, it's a better location for their, their purposes. The decision for the Planning Commission is, you could, we have two options, we can meet here Tuesday nights in this conference room, or we could choose a different date or time and go next door to the town hall, we know right now that the select board is meeting. And that's often been a point of, uh, discussion from the Planning Commission when something important's on the select board agenda, and we're also having an important bylaw hearing. So, um, the recommendation would be on a Wednesday or Thursday evening to have our meeting, um, over there. I think regular meetings can still be Tuesdays at seven, and it would just be these couple times a year, you know, like the Glazer thing, like, bylaw public hearings, when we might wanna anticipate in advance and warn for that other location. It's also a much better space, there's two giant screens there, so a crisp view. The microphones are a lot better, you know, we struggled with the owls in the police station to get all the audio for both people who are attending on Zoom or the recording, so it, it would be a better, hybrid meeting experience.
Okay, um, thoughts, uh, feedback for Emily? All right, so. Does that sound good?
Yeah.
I think that's the way to go, and I don't know how many people responded to the survey.
Oh, yeah, I did put this survey out, um, and I can drop, drop it in the Zoom chat, for Planning Commission members. Uh, let me know what time on Wednesday and Thursday, we could start as early as five PM, so it doesn't have to be a seven PM meeting.
And so this would just be for occasional, larger meetings, and we would then not have the Tuesday meeting that week.
Probably not, no.
Okay. When I first responded, I thought you wanted, you were proposing changing our meeting night entirely.
Oh, no.
Okay. Because the select board used to be on Mondays.
Right.
And we were Tuesday.
Yes.
They came to muscle in on us, so, um, okay.
I mean, if the, we have all the Planning Commission members here, we, we could talk about that, I know, we, we probably should also talk about it with Matt.
Yeah. But. Oh, yeah, absolutely, I mean, it's a staff-relevant thing too, but I was, I was confused when I did my survey. I answered it thinking it was only about moving, well, it was about moving all meetings, not just the bigger ones. But I'm fine with moving the larger meeting, I think they're so occasional that.
Fine.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Um, I have no problem with that. Do you have any other thoughts? Jill, Chapin, any problems with having occasional Wednesday or Thursday meetings?
No.
No, I hope it's Thursday.
Yeah, I have a slight preference for Thursday too, especially in the winter. I, I would ask for a little later, like things, like after. Yeah, I can't do five.
Okay.
Especially on Wednesdays, cause I teach until three, uh, till four forty-five on Wednesdays.
Yeah.
Many semesters.
Yeah, so, so take the survey, if you've already taken it and you wanna change it, just take it again, and then I'll look at the most, you know, current answers.
Great. Was there anything else with that room issue?
That was it, we are working on, we're gonna try to get rid of this desk. I've mapped it out where we can fit like up to eighteen people over there, so we could really pack the house in here. But I know, even if, even if we have a couple people in the room, making that area a better arrangement.
Yeah.
To host a couple more folks, um, when we're not going over next door.
Okay, that sounds good. Um, yeah, and this is accessible, is that correct?
Yes.
There's no step, yeah, there's no step right there.
Right, okay, yeah.
All right, moving right along. You want to go back now, or you wanna go to Glazer's expense plan logistics?
Yeah, let's go back to the, um, PC memo. So there was some input about wanting to give a memo, to the planning, or from the Planning Commission to the select board, about, um, recommendations for the interview and appointment of Planning Commission members, so, Alex Daley's seat's vacant after this meeting, Caitlin Law will no longer be on the commission. We're also advertising for an alternate seat. So there's gonna be three vacancies on, on the commission. And talking with Megan took some liberties on doing an initial draft on this memo. But if there's anything you wanna change, um, or add, if you have any cool interview questions, there's new ones added. Yeah.
Yeah, so, um, I'll just say a little bit, um, I have added a few of the, the new questions. That doesn't seem, I don't know, can you focus online, are you able to read what's on the screen? It looks very blurry here, but I guess it's just our, projector. Um, you know, I think that we have one important component of this is that we have new, the town values policy and the declaration of inclusion are both fairly new. And so we want to do this quite intentionally where we are trying to identify, potential community members who have, perhaps, uh, experienced exclusion and, and in the past or present, and reach out to folks in those communities to try to be more inclusive in the membership of the thing, commission. Um, okay, so that's, I think that's all I have to say. My suggestions were, um, fairly, innocuous, I think. I, I didn't read all of your responses, but. Oh, the one thing I did have a little hangup with, was the, um, I'm just trying to find it, the, the number of people from non, who are not residents, that we, we could potentially have up to three members who are not residents of Williston. And that just seems kind of bizarre to me. I feel like we have plenty of people in Williston to draw from, and to have, especially if we had three people from outside of the town. That just seems really odd, and I feel like we would establish, um, you know, part of the way that we establish trust with the community is that we are the community, and we live here, and we pay taxes, and we, rent or own houses, and we, you know, have kids in school and all those kinds of things. And to, to be a resident of like Essex or something like that would just be kind of odd. And there was one exception I did think of, um, but I just, before I go into that, I wondered what you, the rest of you thought about.
Do we know why that was?
It's in the town charter.
The town charter, I think it's fairly common for most boards, like, I think it's just boilerplate old charter. Um, and I think part of it goes back to like, you know, old school, small towns, when you wanted to have people with a professional background. Sometimes you might not have an engineer or developer attorney who lives in your town, but you want their professional expertise represented on your board.
I see.
But you're right now, Williston's a town of, of ten thousand people. And maybe a non-resident engineer on the DRB or historic preservationist on the hack is different than the Planning Commission's advising more broadly on policy.
Right.
So, so the one exception that I thought of was that, if, if we were committed to, uh, reaching out to members of a, you know, particular racial or ethnic group, that we were unable to find someone to serve on the Planning Commission from Williston, but there was somebody who was very eager and well-qualified, and was a member of that group from a different town, like, maybe that would be a compelling reason to have folks, because there could be some, information or insight about, specifically thinking about like the inclusivity goals, you know, what is it about Williston that would make it more, you know, um, supportive of diverse communities, or something like that. But that was the only possibility that I could envision. Um, and I don't, I'm sure that we have adequate interested folks of color and, um, of other kinds of marginalized groups that would be willing to participate. So I, I don't really see that. So I, I don't really see that as a viable explanation. What do you think?
Yeah, I'm just trying to think of any other, I mean, the only other reason I can think of is like if you live in St. George in your life, it's, you know, very impacted by Williston.
Right.
I'm not, I'm not arguing, I'm just trying to think of other reasons.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
That's compelling enough.
Um, like friends I have who would love to move to Williston but are boxed out with the affordability issue.
Right.
And so like, they'd love to be residents, and, but that's, that's kind of the only thing I can think of.
Yeah, and I, I feel like we, you know, maybe it would be great to hear from folks like that, but that doesn't necessarily mean they have to do a full commitment to be a planning commissioner. Like, we could have an outreach campaign to folks who, you know, are, are somehow excluded and, and, uh, and try to get better about things without.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, realistically, like, we have a hard enough time recruiting people from the USP.
Yeah, I know.
So.
That's what I was gonna say.
But I think your point, so people who, you know, are an underrepresented community that work here, their kids go to daycare here, their lives are in Williston, but they are trying to find a house in Williston where they grew up here, like, has some compelling connection to the town.
Yeah, I like that. Yeah, just to keep having them explain their internal, their internal connection.
Yeah. Uh, and in the meantime, I do think we should, I, I'm totally open to. Um, I do like the idea of trying to understand more about the ways people outside Williston view it. I mean, like you mentioned these friends, I would like to know more about. Okay, is it affordable, you know, that's, that's unfortunate about that horrible housing piece. What is it that compels them to want to be in Williston? Is there, you know, what are the things that they like about it? So that we can understand that piece, too, so. Um, okay. Any other comments on these? What's? Okay, so, um, so we have two vacancies and, or coming up have two vacancies, and, um, I have been pushing for a while that we need an alternate. At first, the Select Board said we didn't, and then we kept pushing back and thanks to Matt, um, finally got an alternate. Um, I do feel like that's important, because an alternate is someone who could, you know, step into a vacancy quite easily, um, and some of these, but it really became apparent, for instance, in the Form Based Code days, because some of these things that we're grappling with are like multi-month, very complicated things, and, uh, and if we had, you know, I mean, like our scenario right now with Alex and Kate both leaving, it's, it's like, oh, you know, that's a big loss, and it would be great if there was already somebody who was familiar with, you know, this big project we've been working through, so.
Especially if we're doing a town plan and the.
A town plan, exactly. Right, and this seems like a really good time to bring an alternate on board.
Mm-hmm.
So. And then the, to close out the memo, um, and a couple comments from you guys here on the long-term recommendations. So most of this memo is structured on short-term, when you're thinking about recruiting and appointing these immediate vacancies, here's some recommendations, and then longer-term, um, a couple of recommendations there. Oh, so, yeah, do we wanna discuss these longer-term recommendations also? Kate, go ahead.
Oh, no, I just wanted to say, um, if it would be helpful, I can, I can stay on for, through July and, I guess, half of August. Um, because I didn't know Alex was leaving as well, so, um, and I'm not, we're not leaving till the end of August, so, um, just throwing that out there if, um, if that would help the commission.
I think that would be super. We could really benefit from your, your wisdom and your perspective, um, for as long as you are able to.
Yeah.
Great, thank you. Um, yeah, so if we, um, that said, like, I think we should start recruiting for, for Kate's replacement also, because, um, I shouldn't say replacement, I should say successor. Because it takes a while, so, yeah, um. Okay, so these longer-term recommendations, these were thoughts for trying to make serving on the Planning Commission more accessible to folks. Specifically, you know, obviously, having an online component is a huge piece. Um, and I hope that people find that helpful. I certainly do occasionally. Um, and I, it's the first time I've seen Shayla in person for a really long time, so that's great.
I have a babysitter, so I mean, I can pay somebody.
Right. Yeah. Yeah. Um, and it's hard for me to realize, to fathom that I also once paid a babysitter to come to Plan Commission, and now my kids are, uh, once out of college. In the middle of college, so that's how long I've been on this board. Um, yeah, so we were thinking about some ideas along the lines of like a stipend. Obviously, this would be very private and totally confidential, um, possibly transportation, possibly a loner, uh, computer machine, whatever that was, a tablet or laptop, and then, um, possibly helping out with childcare. So, a cost, not care, the cost. And so I, I really like these suggestions. I think, Emily, you were the one that came up with these.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I feel like they make it more, again, not just accessible, but kind of manageable for longer term and, um, hopefully result in fewer absences, um, or, or sudden, you know, issues coming up. Um, if people are having a very precarious economic situation, um, maybe this will be a little bit more support. Um, so, thoughts? Or did you wanna say more about it?
I think that covers it, yeah, and I appreciate all the track changes and recommendations in your file.
I'll just say that, um, I think we will have a budget conversation about some kind of participant um, off, cost offset funding, uh, not just for this board, for everybody we staff and/or recruits manager to make it a townwide, um, thing, but, you know, even a couple thousand dollars in the planning budget could meaningfully support someone who says, you know, I'd love to do this, but, um, you know, I need, I need a little bit of help. Um, so it feels like a lot of return, uh, for not a really big investment and, and also just a really strong statement of, you know, we don't want there to be barriers to people serving on these town corners.
Yeah, and I think especially as tough corners has grown so much and is, is, uh, you know, has a lot of renters, which, I mean, when I moved to Williston sixteen years ago, there was nowhere to rent. There wasn't renting. There were no rentals. Um, and so, uh, so I think also, you know, any kind of steps that we can make that prevent any kind of like economic segregation between the town, the different areas of the town, you know, let's get out in front of that and make sure that we're, um, including a lo, a lot of different voices, so. Um, and I was actually, actually gonna ask you if you'd be interested in, uh, recruiting or talking to folks, or if you wanna, if you think you know somebody who would be great, who's maybe more of a tough corners resident, maybe a renter, whatever, I feel like that is such an important part of our town, and those of us who are still remaining on the commission are not residents of that area, so just a thought.
Yeah.
Um, and I'm happy to talk to anybody who's potentially interested, and of course, the staff as well.
Yeah, funny crossing, they have an association that we're reaching out to.
Okay.
Their board and simply saying, you know, you know, can we transmit ourselves, our existence out to the, the population, say, you know, we want people who can.
Yeah.
Participate.
Yeah.
Um, especially when you talk about some of the things that have come up with, um, that actual development, you know, the annex and so forth, there are all some very vocal people there, and I'm sure giving the opportunity and told how important this trans, transit that into a greater contribution. Some people might step up.
Yeah, that'd be great, yeah, and there's a bit of a learning curve, as we all know. But it's, uh, you know.
As far as the communication element, they're like.
Oh, sure.
Be even more easily get names out.
That's great.
Yeah.
I think, I do want, I like, I very much support that. I love the idea of it being town-wide. Um, I do think it would, it it would be very fair to make all of that income-based.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I wanna ask Eric tomorrow, on the application form, if we have a question, you know, a lot of things you go to these days, like, do you need any accommodations for this meeting to be accessible to you?
Yeah.
Um, and that would influence like your, your candidacy.
Right.
But the more lead time we have, like, oh, someone has a, a hearing disability or something needs some accommodation, the more lead time we have to accommodate it and show that, you know, we're thinking about those things.
Yeah, and that's, those are also ways to make sure that not only we're accessible, but we're also hearing from those um, pockets of our community that might not generally participate, so that's really good. Um, we could add to this memo. Redo the town website so it's accessible.
Just redo the town website.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Outreach is hard.
But we all have networks and those are valuable, and, um, and there's social media and things like that, too. Um. So.
Do we want to say more, anything in there about areas of the town, like to kind of normalize what you just said? I mean, we don't.
Yeah, no, I don't, I don't think we do have anything like that, but.
I think what we can do, um, the section about members should come from different parts of the community, different parts of economic back, backgrounds.
Oh, right.
We can, we can beef that section up, say, represent renters and, and tough corners, re, record, call out regions of the town that have historically been underrepresented, um, and then make these changes about, um, not necessarily what your professional background is, but what your, your interest is in, you know, planning in, in general.
Hmm.
Yeah, had a better response than that. Um. That the lived experience is equally as important as a professional background, you know, we all live, work, play, move between spaces, and our, our comprehensive plan in Arizona influences that and vice versa.
Yeah.
Hmm.
I really like that, um, especially compared to like specific professions, that's we talked about before, but, um, yeah. Um, okay, anything else on this item?
I would say also in, in recruiting, if you know somebody who works for an organization or nonprofit that then interacts with people of, you know, different backgrounds, that's a good place to connect. Um, use someone who might frequent the, the food shelter, or is a CHT resident that's really vocal, and you might not know those people personally, but we might know people that work with these organizations, and that's like one of my major takeaways from these conferences about like equity and how to bring people in is find those leaders, those trusted leaders, who can then say, oh, hey, I actually know somebody who would be great for this. That kind of thing.
Okay, great. All right. Um, so while we're on this topic, uh, it's not on the agenda, but we do actually turn over our chair ship on July first, or shall I say June thirtieth? Um, and so if it's okay with you folks, I think we should have a conversation about moving forward. I would prefer to step down from being chair, um, and Kate is her day, her meetings with us are, uh, few. Um, I had not done a lot of conversation about this, because I was kind of thinking, oh, I'll step down and Kate will take over. And then I heard she was moving, um, and so, uh, so that got a little more complicated, but, um, so I kind of reached out to, um, specifically, uh, Jill and Shayla, since they have been on the commission longest, um, and asked if either of them or both of them were interested in taking on the leadership, um, and they have an interesting proposal, so if you wanted to propose that.
Since you're, you are the creative one here.
Well, I'm, I was following sort of our back and forth with Megan, so, uh, the idea would be to co-chair, so sharing the duties sort of in motion in real time. So that would kind of split the burden between Shayla and I to both facilitate meetings, so each of us taking one per month. Um, it would give us a little bit more flexibility, because we have, um, small kids, and that can be hectic at 7:00 PM. Um, and, you know, I'm not, I'm not opposed to having also a vice chair, if you wanted, if that's important, sort of have those titles, but, um, in terms of just the backend stuff, too, like meeting with staff and, uh, especially when there's big lifts coming, like the, the town plan, things like that. Um, adding more meetings to both of our schedules is, is doable, especially we can do it virtually with folks, um, but it would be nice to kind of just share that load, I think, and I think, uh, Shayla and I have a relationship outside the Planning Commission that we could make sure that, you know, nothing falls through the cracks, that we sort of cover ends, um, and, and keep that communication open, um, in a way that I think we could do a pretty good job. So that's the idea.
Is there anything in our rules that prevent that?
I was just, I was starting with, um, state law, which I don't think there is.
Yeah, that's what I was doing.
Shayla and I are known to be a little bit disruptive, so.
Yeah. Stamping staff is actually our number one goal, but you mean.
We like to establish precedent quick.
Some other communities' minutes, it was like, oh, they have they have co-chairs, like a long, long time ago.
Yeah, I don't think there's any issue with it, because I don't think there's a lot about the Planning Commission in the zoning bylaw. It might say something in the charter, but.
The charter just says that the Planning Commission will follow the duties and responsibilities here in, which is.
Be a, be a planning.
Yeah, the, the Planning Commission.
I think it's fine, and, and I think it presents no issue from a staff perspective. It's just, we'll copy both on everything that we would normally copy the chair on and
Right.
you, you know, make ourselves available in whatever way makes sense to communicate, so. Yeah, no issue here.
Um, what are folks' thoughts on, uh, also having a vice chair? Is that something that you would wanna see, uh, or Emily?
I think it would be up to the co-chairs if that's felt to be helpful, um, you know, we, we can work with a pair of co-chairs and a vice chair, not trip any foreign issues.
Right, or the.
So.
Public meeting.
Open, no, yeah, that's what I mean, is not, no open meeting, uh, conflict, so that's okay. Um, commission's got a lot of work ahead of it, um, on the town plan, and, um, I think sharing the load is good, and also if there's someone who thinks they might step into a leadership role later on, or just feels they can take that on, I think it's likely with co-chairs that the vice chair is mostly just gonna be copied on a lot of stuff and participate as, as they want to slash run a meeting when, when neither of the co-chairs can be there, so.
Which has happened.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Definitely, um, but you know, you, we, we've got your back, too, so.
Okay. So Shayla and Jill, what would you think about having a vice chair?
Yeah, I'm totally, I'm totally up for that.
Yeah, I'm open, that, that it seems like the more the merrier, in my opinion, in terms of like sharing the load and, and having backups on backups, no problem.
Okay, um, so, uh, so then I wanted to ask, and sorry to be putting people on the spot here, but I wanted to ask Ellie if you had any interest in being with my chair.
I was wondering if you could potentially send it to the. Um, yeah, sure.
Okay, all right, that's great. Um, Chapin, you had your hand up. Did you have a question or a comment?
No, you're good. Um, I, I think with co-chairs, the primary job of vice chair is covered, but it's still good to have a vice chair, so good.
Yeah, and, and I think also, um, I really love the idea of kind of, that we. That we we do have some turnover and also that we're kind of using the vice chair position as like a. Uh, you know, a a light version, so you can kind of learn the ropes and all that kind of stuff and. Um, and and kind of a, you know, another voice in the, in the, in the mix.
Yeah, and there's nothing that perhaps like even if everyone's here, if you wanna give. The vice chair, one of the co-chairs, the opportunity to take the lead on that meeting, yes, or everybody can have access.
That sounds great, yeah, okay. So um, I think we probably need to do this in a formal sense, um, right, do we vote?
Yeah, if you wanna make a motion.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion that uh we request um. Co-chairing from from uh July first on by Jill Pargini and Sheila Livingston. Um, and should we put on that separately? I think it can be together, okay, and that we have Ellie Beckett be our vice chair. Anybody wanna second? Oh, I guess Kate could second it, right? Okay, so um, all in favor of that new slate? All right, wonderful, thank you, um, and I should say that uh I have. Learned so much, even more than just being a planal, planning commissioner and having been vice chair with. Uh, Chafin in the past, but these past clears have been really very rewarding and um. Almost never frustrating. Only a few moments were frustrating.
Well, thank you very, very much for doing it, really, I appreciate it, and it was a large, large project for your tenure, so.
And you dealt with the pandemic and going virtual, I mean, this was a big, yeah, it was a big time to be the leader.
Oh, I I really appreciate all the great prep that Chafin did because he really did a lot of that initial work. Too, and when, when, in fact, I very purposely. Uh, got him on the board and then asked him to be. But um, yeah, so and I I admit that having, uh, I mean. When I was earlier in the commission, when my kids were younger, it would have been really, really hard to be chair. On my own, you know, I think the co-chair thing is actually a really good step and um and I feel like it's kind of in line with. What we were just talking about in terms of making the planning commission more accessible and. Um, hearing from different folks, so. Great. Okay, do we have anything else?
Uh, two items, uh, very briefly, so logistics update, um. We're targeting probably that second meeting in September or that first meeting in. October for the Glazer specific plan bylaw hearings. Whether it'll be Wednesday or Thursday and time will be dependent on the survey results, um. We are getting ready to engage legal review and then we're planning on having some sort of debrief meeting with you guys. Likely in August, um, to talk about. All the multi, multi-facets of the Glazer specific plan when there's not a decision at the table, um, last meetings was a really big bite. To chew, um, and so give you guys opportunity to talk about it. Matt and I are calling it the no homework edition. We will run a presentation where you guys will have to comb through. Thousands of pages beforehand, um, and then um be able to to debrief and prepare for the hearing.
And we're hoping there might be new members.
Yeah.
Around who can take advantage of that, um, so we'll watch for the timing if it if it makes a difference and we. Push out a meeting to catch a new member for that, I think that'd be important, so keeping an eye on that.
Uh, and the last update, uh, so on July fourth. We are going to be tabling for the Willis in twenty fifty, then then you launch the town plan. Uh, Matt and Simon will be doing the parade shift um in the morning, so they'll be on the village green. And then Melinda and I are gonna do the evening shift before the fireworks. Um, so look for us if you wanna join us, um, let us know, we're gonna be kind of doing what we did um at Town Fair with. The the postcards from the future, we might have another activity um planned, um. And getting people interested in thinking about what is a livable, resilient and equitable Williston look like in twenty fifty? How do we get there and then go see fireworks?
Great, any final comments or questions?
Do, do we have something on Thursday? I had a hold on my for my calendar. Nothing got scheduled, was it just a possibility?
Old repeating Glazer.
This Thursday?
Yeah, is that not a, that's not a thing?
I don't think so.
Anything about that?
Me neither then.
Okay.
I would be gone.
Great, thanks, everybody.
Yeah, so no meeting on July fourth, uh, so our next meeting will be July eighteenth. Come, come find us at the festivities.
This is the beginning of the six months that we hassle ourselves and you about writing an annual report.
Right now.
Yeah. Yes.
Every Monday our staff, oh, we gotta get those annual reports going, fiscal years done, we do that until December when Sarah's like, hey, guys, where's your annual report?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we'll do our best on that.
So we, we don't let Kate go until she writes it for us.
That's great, Kate, I really appreciate your offer to stay with us. It's very, very helpful um in a little transition and hopefully we can kind of have a more of a staggered. Change and um, and where are you moving?
Um, Rhode Island.
Oh, great, okay, nice.
I guess you don't have to be a resident, I guess I could just stay on.
Be careful what you. Being recorded.
All right, well, that's great, um, thank you all for being here this evening and I wish you all a great. Rest of June and early July. We won't see you until the eighteenth, except of course, the festivities.
Hey, everybody.